...from recess, it's March the 4th, 2015, and it is 8:20. And we do have a quorum, so, Mr. Dalton?
Well, later on, 9 o'clock or so, Waters Group, or Springsteen, whatever it will be here. They're gonna make a presentation, hopefully, beginning of this process for executive search. And then they're gonna meet with y'all individually. I know Joe's headed to Texas and Steve's got a meeting. My little curt email was, "Y'all work out your times."
Got it done.
Would it have, have they changed for anybody?
Yeah.
Steve and I swapped.
Steve and Jane swapped.
Yeah, it probably works better for Jane.
The email I sent to you guys was, "If y'all needed to swap, y'all work it out." It wasn't even, trying to sort through that. But, anyway, that will happen beginning, hopefully around 9 o'clock. The other issue, I guess, is that's come up, but we've, I think, I wish, Mr. Morning, we should have, but we'll sort of brief y'all for what we have with this process or land discussions. For this Ag Expo, we met with the property owners and their representatives down at Exit 77. They provided a price for some land. This price was 1,200. In the meeting, we figured 950 or so out for 18.2 acres and, that's 950,000.
You're not reading that.
They also threw out a price of 300,000, I think it was, I may be wrong. On the joining point for acres.
It was 300 or 350, I thought it was 300.
I did too.
Well, I stand corrected. From that meeting, I've gathered, they've delivered all the flats. They've done a bunch of studies on the traffic impact analysis of that property. And they're all in a chair in my office. I looked at part of it, I read a little bit of the traffic impact analysis. I hate to say, you pull numbers from the sky and say, "This is how many things were generated, how many trips," and stuff. It seemed pretty darn high. One of the things of due diligence to this thing is to talk to V-DOT. Which I plan on doing a little bit tomorrow, since we're gonna see them at our house field too down at Habeey. Whether or not they'll even let us use the road. And I also contacted a group named Pretoria that owns 12 acres, 12.2 acres, that's adjoining this property, Pretoria with L.L.C., they're a house in Florence, South Carolina. They're willing to sell their property. And their comment was, "Fair market value." The current assessment of their property is $20,008. Plus, there's a building on it that's valued at 1, 90,600, excuse me.
How many acres is it?
12.2.
And that's, and that's stretching it to value on that.
Now we're at 1.5 million.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's what they're paying taxes on.
Well, I don't think it's worth that much right now.
So, the whole cost is about 1.5 million?
Yep.
Have you had a chance to find out any idea what a price is on that other corner there?
That 10 acres, the white residence, I have not. I tried to call Gene Smeltzer yesterday, and it was unsuccessful. But, they have cleaned it up a lot. What I did find on that, I printed their land card. He actually owns two houses there too. Those two little brick houses on the front, there, before. But I did not get to talk to Mr. Smeltzer. Did call, but then, I asked somebody, they said he may be working then at the Department General Service.
That's lots, I'm under the word for it.
The two houses he owns is four?
Around the front end there.
Sure, sure, okay.
If you're coming down from K-Grass, first two on the left, one's a little smaller than him. But, his land that joins that little par three golf course, it owns in a wild number of about 20 little bitty lots. There's a right away between Kangaroo and his property that goes up there. There's a bunch of little bitty lots that run on the right hand side of that right way, all the way up to Pretoria.
That named East Street or East Lane?
Yeah. I've given the directions, since that's not really, any houses on, could take their sides now, but. I hate thinking ambulance would start up there or a fire truck. So, that's what I found out, from our meeting. Tim, you and Joe were in that same meeting, I missed something.
So, we got three, three property owners that we're working, or would be dealing with, to get the whole?
Possibly four.
Not three.
Three.
Three. Smeltzer, Pretoria, and Dorton, K-Grass Link, because they own the golf course and the 18.
Yeah, but wouldn't you also find out what that Smeltzer property is worth?
Well, that is three.
That is.
The one guy owns two properties.
Oh, okay, two.
Four tracks of land.
Thank you.
Three people.
Four pieces of property, but three owners.
There's three owners, there's probably 40 pieces of land, in all those lots.
Tracks, yeah. So, I mean, from a financing standpoint, our, well, what's our plan? Take, I mean, would, would our plan be to have the Ag Expo kick in what they've got, but they're still gonna be 1.2 million short?
Listen, I haven't worked on a financing plan, anything, or, what I was, my direction's worth looking at the property and see what in our group has looked, what they think and feel that is required to make this go into stormwater, all the way through parking and entrances and development. That's, I think that's the reason they ended up talking about the Smeltzer property, the little par three golf course, is because of the stormwater problems that could be there. Pretoria property is already mostly gravel, with the parking's got a little building on it, but Tim, I'm gonna say a little building, Joe told me it was, working it again, but there is a building, two stories.
There is a building there.
See, that's the, that's the difference between an engineer and a banker. I'm thinking about financing, you're thinking about.
18.2 is, 12.2 is, I think, cattle trailers, stock trailers, parking is added, would probably right now without a lot of pre-discussions. We've had to place below it for stormwater problems or stormwater runoff. 18.2 has been graded throughout, how much you paid for the grading. I do have a comment with it, that the county would have never paid that for it, because that was not a good number for grading, or what we, how we did. But, there's still, I went back and walked some of it the other day, slipped out of here and walked part of it. I personally like the Pretoria property. There's, there's some huge, not huge, there's some correctable problems on the 18.2 acres. There's a lot of erosion, deep gullies. It appears that there's a pond, maybe it used to be another one that's got washed out. The Smeltzer property, some of it's really good, some of it's okay. I do believe that right away gives you an opportunity. There's some comments on the interstate that you can direct some of that stormwater flow to help with it. At the end of the day, there's still some engineering stuff you gotta do to make that work.
Well, that's my question. I mean, I, I don't know what the plan is. I mean, if, are we, do we buy and then you say, "Okay, you know, Ag Expo group, you all want land, here's land." And then we, you know, we back away, do we pay to have it developed? What, is it gonna use, would it use the road that goes up toward K-O-A? You're talking, and, and that's gonna have to have improvements? Will that impact right away?
I, I agree.
And people's problems?
One of the comments I made in our meetings the other day, Gary, was, "We gotta talk to V-DOT." I mean, there's, in my mind, with this traffic impact analysis, you're buying property, putting it together. How is V-DOT gonna react? Are they gonna say, "We're not gonna let you dump the traffic"? I mean, we gotta know that before we buy the property.
Gary, you've asked two good questions there. With what Schleel has explained, there's three legal entrances to this package property. You're right, it would impact the travel on the road goes K-O-A. But, on the plus side of that, with that development, we can take care of the water problem they're living with now. Tim and I were over there two years ago answering complaint calls. They have a serious water problem that impacts their homes. So, that side of the road would definitely be getting an improvement. There, there won't flood right to the back of their house every time we have three inches of rain. And all that's part of a stormwater management plan. But, I don't think anybody envisions that being a primary entrance. You sure wouldn't want to close a legal entrance, but it wouldn't be a primary entrance. From the economic side, and Roy already asked his question, start with, I have done a lot of thinking about the finance. The first thing, what we wanna do with this thing is economic development for the corridor. If you do any development, the first thing you gotta do is hand a land an anchor, something that will bring, bring people to that. I think definitely, the Ag Center won't be a Target or a Home Depot. But, it'll be a major activity on that total development scene. Just, just visualize and be positive for a minute. Look what happened to Bristol. 20 years ago, if we would have ever suggested that Exit 7 and 12 and 14 was gonna be what it is today, nobody would have believed it. And if we really believed it, we'd have gone out there and bought some land when it was cheap. Well, now, this whole development has to start somewhere to get economic development along the corridor. The financial package, in my opinion, the county has, needs to always own that land. Land is safe, gold is safe, silver's safe, everything else, in my opinion, is questionable. But, it's a solid investment if the county owns land. And long-term or mid-term lease it to whoever the operator is. The land secures our involvement only if we own it. It's, to me, it's the ultimate safe investment because of location. And my opinion is just that, just an opinion. I think that this definitely is a marketable loan package if we secure the land by quickly getting an appraisal. So, we know what we're really dealing with instead of, because it was really enjoyable to watch a chess match with this dickering that went on the other day. When he threw out $760,000 worth of grading. That's just a number, he can't prove it, don't know the money ever changed hands. And he said he couldn't, that was a deal his dad made with one of his buddies from Tasle. So, he was admitting that that was a, a number. But, the fact that in the first meeting, they dropped that much in price, we're just at somewhere in the dickering process. Without an appraisal, we don't know where we need to go.
Well, let me ask this. All right, let's assume that the land is, is affordable and, and, you know, county places, you know, we can buy it, so we get one. What happens then? That's what I wonder.
Okay.
Yeah, do, are, are we gonna come back and say, "Well, we need the development plan, we need to build a building, we need to..."
Well, listen, just wait a minute. We got a deal coming up in May, we gotta have some answers for the Tobacco Commission.
Yep, a deal coming up in May?
They have a meeting in May.
Okay.
That's when they fund their projects.
Well, we find out when we get to.
And we're still alive, and we've got the best, reportedly, you know how people's word is, it erodes sometimes, being polite, but we've got the most support that project's ever had on the Tobacco Commission. But, let's stay with the finance part, because R.D.'s ears perked up there. If we secure this land, I believe it's marketable to take a loan package, the USDA, Rural Development, others, that's questionable, but while we take advantage of the guru before he leaves.
Can, the commercial paper deal that we got, like, out on Progress Park, is that, would that be available for this type of a project? It's a small.
Actually, that's the only way, that is the most practical way. The best rate we can give R.D. about land is 4.75.
That's not a real good deal.
No.
So, would we float it out on interest, interest payments?
I talked to Bob Liederberg, Bundy, I guess it was, we're probably still in 2.4 or 2.5 rate on the private market.
So, let's stick with Gary, man. I have hope for you that you can come around to our way of thinking here. If, if you can do this package, and you did long-term investment, then you go into development stage, that's where the other money's gotta come from.
And that's why I'm asking.
Right.
You say the development stage.
Right.
That's the Ag Expo.
Right.
So, we then basically, and, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, whatever, what you're talking about is, is buying the land and then basically just turn around and leasing it to the Ag Expo.
Right. And we will have to enforce and help them achieve grants. Tim has strong words from the congressman's office, that they can earmark some money. I've always believed Tobacco Commission is not the only source. But, there's several ways that can get it built. Now, it's not all gonna get built in a day. The arena is probably gonna cost, and this is a Joe number, so don't write it down. But, I believe you can build it for 2 to 2.5 million, if you do it right. If you let tech or somebody design it for you, it'll cost 5 million. Because, they've never really done anything, it's all theories to them.
But, we would find, we have to finance that too, right? Because the Ag Expo group does not have any.
No, I don't think that they would break ground until they had the money to do it. What we had asked for, what the Ag Group asking Tobacco Commission, is a $3 million pledge, a million dollars each year. Because, that's realistic, the timeframe that I think you would need the money. There might be a need for construction money, but you wouldn't let that construction money unless you had permanent financing to back it up.
Talking, and I guess kind of expanding on what Gary is talking, I mean, we talked about, I think when the project started, we were thinking, we had a, a property that had some facilities that were usable on it. We were gonna do a lot of tax credits to acquire the property, so now we're talking about, you know, more money, but the Ag Expo, we, I know we talked at one time about their, that group, about, you know, from what I understand, it's just, you know, it's mainly a lot of people in farming. About expanding that out to getting, you know, a lot, a better breadth of, of board member and, do you, where do we stand on that is, because I think that will be critical for them to develop.
If we're going further talking, realistically, we probably ought to go into closed session to talk about it. Because, yeah, you're exactly right, we talked about it, it's imperative that that operational organization be independent, incorporated, and.
Diversified.
Badly expanded.
I can ask this, knowing the group, knowing the history of the group, I mean, can, can we say with, with, with full confidence that once we get the land and turn it over, then they're just gonna take it and run with it? I don't think so.
That's what I just said. It's a package, you can't do it that way.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that the county is gonna be a whole lot more involved in this than just buying the land?
No.
Okay, and, Joe, I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
Well, if, if you have the land deal, the package.
Let's assume that the county buys the land.
Well, let's, don't go that far.
Okay.
But, when, when we have our ducks in a row and can do it, then you go to that group and say, "To make this happen, you have to agree to reorganize. And here's what we want the reorganization to be," and they'll go along with it.
And they've not agreed to go along.
They've already agreed to it. They know they can't operate it. They also know that they don't have what it takes to get it built. I mean, just in their, their skill set.
So, you're.
That's a good word, was, "Skill set."
We use that a lot.
You go out to work, hair dye, I'm leaving.
Oxymoron.
But, this, this is not a, not a knee jerk that hadn't been thawed out and the spade work done, that they're receptive to the idea that this is the only way it's ever gonna happen.
So, you are saying, if you're confident that we can tell them that they have to reorganize, and that they will reorganize with people, that you have confidence we'll, we'll get this done?
Yeah, to rephrase your words, they're in agreement to reorganize.
Under either authority or commission.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to do that relatively.
Are they the same people?
No.
They're gonna have to do that relatively quickly.
Some of these people that have been there from the beginning are willing to, to step out of there?
Yep.
They're gonna have to do that pretty quickly and, and probably simultaneous, as we look through the due diligence of the property, because it, it's gotta be there for the grant funding is applied for.
Yeah, once, once, once we vote to do it, then the next step is their reorganization. The reason I've said, "Let's leave their money alone," if we build this thing, that you've got to have operation money, or it'll be a monument to stupidity.
And then the other que, who is, who, who is gonna be, I guess, ultimate decision maker, or who's in charge of reorganizing that? Is that gonna be, they're gonna reorganize themselves, do we, are we gonna appoint people from the board? Because, we gotta get the right people there to make the grant look well and to make the project go.
What I've tried to point to idea is, and Mr. Dalton's been involved on a Pripia as an advisor, I think it has to either be an authority or a commission, whichever works best for this. Both of them are avenues to get where we need to be. The ultimate control, that's not the right word. The, the impetus of getting it done has to be leadership from the board, or the Economic Development Committee, or whoever you want to do to do it. They don't have the skill sets to put aside 8, 10 years of their work, because it's gonna be like giving up their baby. But, they're there, we've worked on this for a year now, and they realize that's in their future. Do you agree with that, Tim? Are you halfway there?
Well, but in essence.
You can come on up now.
Well, in essence, I think you're, you know, you're, you're saying what I'm afraid of is that, you know, the county's gonna be more and more and more involved. I, yeah, several years ago, I bought two horses, I, and I thought, man, you know, that's, yeah, I bought two horses. And financially, I just found that that, that was the tip of the iceberg.
Yep.
And so, that's what I'm afraid of.
You gotta get away from.
That's just the tip of the iceberg.
Well, I mean, Pennsylvania's not involved in it like that. Their board is not, the county's not involved in it like that.
That, that's right, but they didn't buy the land, they didn't, all they did was some in-kind.
Well, they still, they upkeep, they still are there upkeeping it and doing all the maintenance and everything, and they, they're renting office space and everything else there.
But, that's that authority, it's not the county.
No, the county's renting space. Their, the extension office and everything is at there, at, at the center.
Well, I, I'm sure the extension home bureau and, and that sort of thing, but I didn't think that the county owned the, that owned the building and.
Actually, the county pays rent for FSA.
They're an income stream for the ownership.
Yep, that's exactly.
Well, Gary, in reality, we can never mirror Pennsylvania. We just can't, we're not like them in many ways, and I'm glad we're not. But, the first thing is get over the, the horse pain. We've all been there, we've all went down that road, and it's a lasting imprint on you, I know that. There's no money to be made with horses. There's been massive failures that were just built on horses.
Well, when I said, you know, the, the horse thing, when I was talking about, is that I bought the two horses and I paid for them, but then it turned out that I had to buy the saddles, I had to buy the tack. I, I had to buy a, a trailer to haul them in, I had to buy vet fields, I had to shoe them, I had to, that's what I'm saying. And it wasn't about horses at, at the Ag Center, what I'm saying is that, you know, you, you think that, you know, the horses, that's a big expense, well, it's not. And that's what I'm afraid of in this case, you know, the land looks like the big expense, but, but that's what I'm afraid that it won't be. Because what I'm afraid of is that we buy the land and we say, "Okay, here it is, you all do it," and then if history serves as any teacher at all, they're not gonna be able to do it. And so, then they're gonna come back to us and say, "Well, yeah, yeah, we need your all's help and stuff." So, I don't, you know, economic development is one thing, but, but running a, you know, a center is something else, and I think that that's what we'll, we'll come down to. a center is something else, and I think that that's what we'll, we'll come down to. And Phil, I'm, I'm, I'm saying all this also, I understand that I'm just wanting to vote. So, you know, so I, you know, you all don't have to, you know, convince me as, you know, as much cost, you know, if it's, if it's six one, guess what? It passes.
I hope it continues to work that way.
Well, I mean, I, I think we got a lot of, we got a, I do, I see Gary's point there. I think they've got to reorganize now.
Yeah, and I, I think we're there, although, until you get a piece of land, unlike what the Tobacco Commission's done, they have funded some ideas. I'm not for funding an idea. I want to see the security. And Gary, I really believe Artie's a banker here, and Steve's in business, Coy's in business. That land, if we get the best negotiation with our chief negotiator capable of getting, you're not exposed when you buy land. You've invested. It's not like throwing it out there and you can't recover. That, that's the whole point of development, is as long as it's secured, in our case, it wouldn't have to be a hundred and ten percent secured, but it's not a big gamble as long as you own the land.
Hey, we'll find that out when we sell all that property, how much we make off of.
Well, if we.
That county property.
If we, if we put against it what we paid for that land, I'll bet you we'd be paying capital gains on a significant number.
Yeah, I mean, I, so you're saying we should, we should secure the land and then have them, I mean, I'm just looking at it from a timing standpoint. We are March, early March.
Yeah, we need it done by May.
I mean, by the time you get an appraisal, negotiate contracts, do title work, you're, you're looking at, I mean, we'll be lucky to get it closed by the end of April, early May, if we start it today, I think. I mean, maybe we can push it. But then.
Well, for all practical purposes, I think if you go to the Tobacco Commission and say, I've got an option on this.
Contract.
Because the, the stickler here is VDOT.
That's, that's right.
That's, that's the wild card.
I think there's a couple of things to protect our interest, even though we've talked price with all these people. And probably, I think you're going to have appraisal out there.
Can you, can you purchase that with method B?
Yes.
So by the end of the week, you could have an appraiser under contract?
Yes.
Purchase that.
State method B.
Procure, for, the county procurement ordinance allows whatever it is, fifteen, twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars.
Way up to fifty.
I try to keep it at five, but my own well-being. I understand the authority, but my own well-being.
Don't spend forty-five thousand on appraisal, have a.
Yeah.
I think, I think you get the appraisal. Second thing, you take that appraisal for all three of these, however many properties, the three owners. We have a meeting and talk about what that appraisal says. Then if everybody is in agreement, or four to three, or six to one, or seven to, then you go to the option. And the same, same breath when this is happening, this external stuff, and with VDOT, that we put together a financing package so that y'all can look and see what that financing package would be and what the cost and implication to a future budget. At the same time, that you have your attorney put together how you would structure an authority commission and. And lastly, lastly, hey, John?
Morning.
Lastly, before you do any of this, we've got to have a public hearing. It's not one point five million, it's not the budget anywhere. We've, we've got to do the due diligence through that public hearing process to incorporate, incorporate it into this whole thing. If it's okay, I'll put together an email to everybody, a sort of a schedule to have this thing, and make that trough deal, the worst got to happen. But I think on the legal side, I think county attorney, whoever you're going to use, has to come up with a plan of how this is going to be and present to y'all post haste to be sure that that actually works. I mean, I think y'all have the rights to do certain authorities and commissions, but I think county attorney or legal counsel needs to put that forward and say, this guy's, this is what you need to do. I'm not willing today to say this is how you do it. I think what I'm willing to say is you have authority to make those under certain conditions.
That's really step two of the whole thing. The county can buy the property if you were just going to hold that property. The authority only has to do with the operational, if you want it to be that way. They don't have my support at all unless the county owns the property, because that's where the security is. Is that what you were saying?
Well, I, whether the county owns it or not, I'm more concerned with the structure of this authority.
You've got to know what's going to happen down the road.
And that's part of the total structure. If you want me to use the word paradigm, I will.
But that, of everything that we've talked about, those first four, I have to make up.
Well, you're going to get on with, do you need a motion to get the appraiser?
That'd be nice.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Mr. Dalton to use the method to hire an appraiser as quickly as possible, with timelines on his delivery of when we need it back.
Okay, do I have a second? In discussion? Yeah, we know where you're at, Gary. Okay, here, no more discussion, I'll do a roll call vote. Coy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, no?
And yes. Motion passes.
Same time we do this, I'm going to develop a plan of action and email it to everybody.
But, you know, I'd agree, we need to get with VDOT, and that's the first thing, and see if we can use that entrance on Redding McRoe.
I think that's the key to this.
Redding McRoe.
I think that's the key to this whole thing. VDOT says you can't use it. You can buy all property you want to, but. And all of you are welcome. I've got the plans and impact study in there. VDOT definitely has them. You want to comment on them?
Just who do we need to talk to? Do we need Donnie and who else? Who do we need to talk to?
Y'all know Steve. The new, we really need Mr. Hamilton, who's the new district administrator down there.
Is he going to be there tomorrow?
Well, I tried to set up a meeting two weeks ago, and he broke us. After he got appointed district administrator, he broke his ankle. He's not, just showing up on the job yet. He may be there tomorrow, but I doubt it.
Gary, just as a sidebar, have we made any progress towards your conversion at all?
No, just simply because I'm, I'm still in the, in the dark as to what's going to happen after the, after the land purchase, and I don't mean to, you know, to disparage anyone, but I'm, you know, with the, with the history of this, this Ag Expo group, I just don't think that they are, they're going to be able to, you know, pull it together.
But here we go, we're in agreement on that. Where, where are you?
Well, I'll have to see, you know, what a reorganization looks like and, you know, and who's going to want. I just, I also am not entirely sure that these people who've been involved in this thing for, for all that time are going to want to, you know, give it up and, and just, you know, and step back and let somebody, you know, take over the reins.
Well, you know, they'll work, and they'll work with us and whoever, whatever we decide, you know, how it's going to be structured. But the main thing, you know, they've tried for years, and they, and they've got some funding and raised some money, and they raised some money this year. But the problem that they've been buttoned into is they've never had enough money to get land and to get grants and all, and other things from federal government and, and state is you don't have no land. So we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to put anything towards it. And that, and that's basically what the tobacco commission, and when I've talked to Senator Carrico's on board, Mary Ray Carter, which she doesn't have a vote unless Maurice, the Secretary of Commerce is not there, then she votes for, for him, and Bill Carrico, and, and, you know, we've worked hard to get all of them on board with this.
Yeah, we have Ralph Smith's support now, which we've never had before.
Like I said, you know, Senator Warner's office and Morgan Griffin's office is both staying in contact with me, wanting to know where we're at on this. And, you know, they're, they're wanting to, to do some federal assistance, so.
Well, Mr. Dalton's outline will help, I think, Gary, because you're going to go step by step, and then when you get to that hangup part, then next time we have a meeting, we'll let you know, and you come and see for yourself. I mean, to me, they realize that they're at the end of the road, and that's the best time to negotiate reorganization, when, when they realize it's, this is the only, only way to get it done. And I feel confident that they're there, that they know this, this is it. I don't have a time to waste on this thing unless we're going to move forward with it.
Well, I mean, I, you know, it's, you know, this, this morning, it gives, what, five one to go? I mean, I know we're moving forward with it, but I.
I don't think that's settled for the time being.
Yes.
I've got a run, but I'll see you this afternoon.
Okay. John and VDOT, we're going to talk about, I guess John will change his schedule a little bit to go through the process of what's going to happen over the next few months or weeks for full board, and then when that, after that's over, we'll, I guess we can turn, and she's going to meet with the individual. So be nice to them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How is everybody? I'm sorry, I, I work with a lot of boards and commissions and councils, and I've never had an introduction like this before. Good to see you all again. We're, we're pleased to be getting the process started for the recruitment of a new county administrator here in the county, and I'm going to be talking to Mr. Dalton today, a little bit about the classification and compensation component, getting that started as well. We've already asked for some information, received it. In conjunction with the executive recruitment process for your administrator, the first step in the process is for us to build what we call the position profile, and that's why I'm here today, is to meet with each of you as board members and learn more about what you would like to see in your new county administrator from the standpoint of qualities, traits, abilities, basic skill sets, those types of things, as well as to identify issues that the county may be facing in the next couple of years, so that we can include that in the profile for the, for the recruitment notices. We are also working on your community profile. We've already started that, and I have a list from our analyst of things that she needs, which I'll be talking to Mr. Dalton about. Nothing, nothing really complex, a few pictures, access to the county seal to post, you know, into your recruiting notices, those types of things. So we're working on those items already. When we have finished speaking with the board in regard to the, in regard to your preferences and, and your desires in regard to the quality, skill sets, et cetera, in regard to the new administrator, we'll, we'll work on developing that information into a position profile, which is essentially a job description for the county administrator, because none really exists for any county administrator in the state. There, well, I shouldn't say that, none's, none's too much, too strong of a term. Most communities, one does not exist, and it's, you know, you're dictated by the Code of Virginia in regard to what the responsibilities are, but for every community, it morphs a little bit. For example, we've worked with Carroll County on classification and compensation, and county administrator down there, while he's a non-classified employee, is also the director of the gas system, he's also director of the IDA, he's also director of the PSA. And those are secondary duties, and if he were to leave, I guess the county would be looking for somebody who could handle all of those responsibilities. So that makes for a whole different set of skill sets than maybe an administrator who is focused just solely on economic development or finance, or just a general administrator. So we will be getting that together. When we have those two documents prepared, they will come back to you for review, because they are, they're a statement that reflects what the county is all about, the community profile, and then the position profile is really the guide that we will use to recruit folks and then to screen folks initially for your consideration. The, the candidates will be looking at that, seeing how their skill sets match up with the, with the board's needs, and when we present the candidates, these will also be used for you to evaluate the candidates that we present to you, to see how closely they match those criteria. So we would expect to have your information to you in about two weeks, maybe a little bit less than two weeks, for your review. As soon as we receive approval from the board, and I'll sketch out a more defined schedule after we meet today, but after we have approval from the board on the profiles, we'll begin the recruitment process, which is typically a thirty-day process. From the thirty-day, from the end of the thirty-day window in regard to the recruitments, we will have a report to you in ten days on your, on our recommended candidates. So hypothetically, this being March the fifth, if we deliver, if we deliver a profile to you by the nineteenth, begin recruiting on the twentieth, we would have candidates to you right around May first. And then hopefully, we'll have seven to ten candidates, and I only say hopefully because you never know what the candidate pool is going to look like. But we would bring forward seven to ten candidates with specific profiles, meet with the board, and review the report. And the report, as I noted in our, our earlier meeting, will include a lot of information for you folks, a summary of the process, draft interview questions, draft interview schedule, questions that you cannot ask in regard to the process of interviewing a county administrator candidate. We will also include the profile for each candidate that we've interviewed, the background information that we've conducted, and it will give you a pretty good idea of the quality of the candidates, why they want to come to Withville County, With County, why they, why they, what they've done in their career, what type of community they're currently managing or organization that they're managing, if they, if they come from a, a non-county or city or town background. We will have the results of the interviews, the, the reference checks that we have conducted. We will also have a good deal of information about how they manage, what they're supposed We will also have a good deal of information about how they manage, what their specialty areas are, what they've accomplished in their career, what some of their strengths are, what some of their weaknesses are, so you can get, you can have an idea of what you're looking at as far as your top candidates. We'll review that with you. We would suggest that the board consider maybe initially five to seven candidates for interview, and dependent upon their location, you know, if they're regional candidates, it would be good to have everybody in on a face-to-face basis. That will take, from the time that you make your choice, typically a board takes about a week to make that decision, review all the information. We counsel the governing bodies we work with not to make snap decisions on anything, because this is a process that really, once you've made a decision, you've got to live with it. And it's not, not something which is easily reversible. And it's a, it's a decision which is a difficult decision, because you're dealing with personalities, you're dealing with people, and that's always a very imprecise science. I mean, we can do all the background work we can do, we can give you really good candidates, but we've got to have a good match with the governing body and with the community, and that's an imprecise science. You know, we, as I told you before, we've been real successful in doing that, but we wanna be very careful and deliberate as we move through the selection process to make sure that you're taking every angle of the candidates into account. So from the time that we deliver that report, it would take about a week for you to review the report, come back together, select your top candidates for initial interviews. Because everybody has a busy schedule, another 10 days out, we would probably have our first round of interviews. The board would probably be able to narrow your candidate pool down to two to three at that time. We would recommend a second round of interviews about a week later. Then you enter into discussions with the candidates about employment terms, and that takes about a week. And then you've got the announcement to make at a board meeting of who your top candidate is and what the terms of the agreement are. The candidate could have anywhere between 30 to 45 to 60 days if they're in a current position to ease away from their current employer. We have a recruitment, as you recall, I came down from Winchester to speak to you last time I was here. We're just now concluding the negotiations with that candidate. That candidate, who's been chosen by the Frederick Board, she has, she had a 60-day notice provision in her, excuse me, it was a 90-day notice provision, her employment agreement with her current board, and they have allowed her to, you know, exit within 30 days, because they feel that they really need to move on. There's not much to be gained from her being there for an additional 60 days. They have a deputy that they can fill into the slot. So overall, the process from the get, from getting started today should take us about four months until you've named somebody. And I'll give you, after we've had an opportunity to meet today, I'll give you a very well-defined schedule that allows everybody to pencil in some dates on your calendars, break, blocks of time, so that we can move through the process together and prevent any hiccups.
Anybody have any questions?
On the, on the community profile...
Mm-hmm.
What sorts of things does it include?
It includes a background on the county, it includes a background on the structure of the county government, number of employees, the budget. It talks about the services that the county provides, talks about the school system, access to medical care, the board's priorities, those types of things.
Okay, I mean, as far as, is it, does it include things like, you know, recreational opportunities, faith-based communities, things like that? Okay.
Yeah, it's a, you know, as I was speaking to a board last night in this part of the state, they had a couple copies, one from Bedford County, one from Roanoke County, we had developed, and they said it's a really nice marketing piece for the county. And it talks about the county as a whole, the quality of life, and what somebody might experience here in With County. And it's broad-based, because you need to know a little bit about everything about the community that you might be applying for a position in. So it's, and I think they're very well-done, they're very attractive documents. We also leave them with you, we'll send you a Word version, and you can use it in the future for whatever purposes you like. Yes, sir.
Okay. After you talked to all of us today, you know, we're kind of, you know, the first group is, the board is, I mean, what's your, you know, methodology for coming up with a position profile? Are you doing keyword analysis, or you just, what's your process for taking seven people and putting it together?
Yeah, the best term I can use is blend. Okay? You know, we've sent you a, kind of a preparatory memorandum to get you thinking about the things that we'll be talking about, things that we'll be asking about in regard to development of the profile. And as, those are key, those are all key elements to the position profile. And so what I will do is I keep, I keep a log of each discussion with a board member. We pull those together, look at what everybody's telling us, and see what the key components for the position are.
Jane, Koi?
We pick someone, then after we give them the job, and then he comes and says that he don't want the job, what, we have to do that, or do all of that too, huh?
No, you know, what we try to do is, hopefully, what we will have are, at the end of the process, two or three really solid candidates. And there'll be one person that everybody probably, and I hate to use this term, but likes more than the others, and feels maybe fits a little bit better. While we're in the discussions, or you're in the discussions with a candidate in regard to those, you know, those criteria for their employment, you know, when they're gonna come to work, compensation, things like that, we hold the other candidates, we keep them involved in the process, and they're kind of your second and third choices, and you can, unless they're just completely objectionable, we would advise, we would suggest that you consider the second choice as a possible candidate. Now, if we have no candidates whatsoever that you're, that you're comfortable with, we just restart the process again, and we do that at no cost to the county, because we wanna get this done, and get it done, you know, to your satisfaction.
Joe, you have any questions?
I'm not gonna skip out on you today, but I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
It's a previous arrangement thing. I just can't put it off.
Yes, sir.
But to me, this is probably the most important thing that any of us will do during our terms on the board. So doing it right, getting the right person is really paramount, and what this is all about. Obviously, I think, because that's the face of the county, whether we like it or not.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's about personality, and...
It is.
You don't, you don't use gas to put out a fire.
Yes.
And there's a lot of fires coming to this building every day. And I've told these guys, I've probably made more bad hires than everybody here combined, unless it was big Gary when he was hiring all those school teachers. Everyone I've worked with, they never fail. But people, person with the right background should work. Things are pretty dynamic here in the county, and I think if you haven't realized that yet, you will. We're on the threshold of being a really significant time for With County.
You know, one of the things that we do look for in somebody who wants to be a county administrator or city manager is somebody who wants to do the job. I mean, it's, it's kind of a, well, having been a county administrator or manager, it can be a grueling job, particularly when things aren't going well. You've got to really be invested in the process of doing good for the community that you're assigned to and you're working with. And without that commitment, you know, if it's just a job, it's, it really needs to be more than that, and that helps you relate well to the people, both in the good times and the bad times. It helps you relate to your board members in the good times and the bad times, and it really helps you through those good times and bad times. You've got to really be committed to being a good public official, and so we look for that. And as I mentioned a couple weeks ago, there are folks that just take it as a job, and they just travel around from community to community. Those are folks that we don't really spend a lot of time with as far as considering them.
I've worked with county governments all over the state, and we've got the most broad mix here in Virginia, if you know. We've got some of those people that are just employees, and they're gonna slam the door on the equipment time, and they don't do anything extra. Some of them don't even wanna be where they are. We've got others, and one of them come to mind with you, that basically, in his tenure as county administrator, good guy, probably has been in that county too long, but that's what it is, 'cause they, we've got other counties that are where possibility between the executive or county managers and the board, and the board changes, you know, it's different. Finding somebody that's flexible enough, has government in mind, I think that this is more the director for one of the biggest businesses in the county. This is a lean operation here. One of the questions I hope y'all look at is, how big are staffs are they used to?
Yes, sir.
They're never gonna have a staff of masses here. And this operates more on the school side than on county side, but we've got some pretty massive county governments. I keep, if these guys, Alamo County, if anybody's ever written a job description, they got a couple of them. And what do they do, I have no idea. But we're not that.
No, we understand that.
We're in a rural area, so even here in our rural area, we've got quite much diversity in how the counties are run. Right here close.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Hale, your comments are very appropriate, and I really understand what you're saying. You know, it kind of takes me back to the days when I was a county administrator, and I was in Caroline County, and we didn't have an assistant administrator, we didn't have a finance director, you know, and we were doing a lot of different things. We were changing the county very rapidly with utilities and economic development, schools and all, all types of things. And a gentleman who followed me, a couple of county administrators after me, saw me one day, and he says, "Well, I just don't know how you did it, and I don't know how you did the budget." And that was before we had computers and spreadsheets. And I said to him, I said, "Percy, we just did it." And I understand what it, what it's like to have to do those things, having a small staff. Actually, I enjoyed that better than having a larger staff when I was up in, up in Warrenton, because you could really gauge the progress of what was going on a lot better, and if you had good people you worked with, you'd get a lot of things done without a lot of headaches. And so I understand, you're, one thing that you just mentioned, though, that's really intriguing to me is, it's something I think we're gonna have to be careful with, is counties that change, and there are significant changes on the horizon, have to be very careful with that change, particularly how the, how that change is introduced, how those new things that are coming online are introduced. They may be really good things, but sometimes the citizens have a kind of a threshold of how much change is, you know, they're willing to take, and so it has to be introduced very well. So this would require somebody with probably pretty good communication skills, who can let folks know what's going on, but not overwhelm them with information, and introduce them to those changes and those things, those things that are happening in the county, that how they're going to benefit the county, and just not let them happen.
Fall County is a case study of that. That when it happened, it happened like the floodgates did open.
Yes.
You were there right before the floodgates opened.
Yes, sir.
Done. Sure.
Start on my trade mission.
All right, you have anything? Well, John, thank you.
Okay, thank you all, I'm gonna look for, I look forward to working with you.
Looking forward to working with you, too. Get this process on the road and get it completed. Mr. Dalton, we have anything else to bring forward to the board at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, here none. I'll adjourn us until the 10th.